This Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four of the City of Waynesboro Planning Commission. Would anybody like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I will do that.
Alright, we'll do that.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first on the agenda tonight, we have adoption of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next we have review and approval of the minutes of the meeting held August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We had an opportunity to, was here, have an opportunity to review and approve those minutes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we review and approve the minutes for the meeting held August twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor for approval of the minutes of the meeting held August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you have none, motion carries. Next, we have public hearing for zoning text amendment initiated by the City of Waynesboro to amend City Code, section ninety-eight dash ten point three to add a new definition for cottage court, section ninety-eight dash two point three to add cottage court as a housing type, section ninety-eight dash two point four to add cottage court as a conditional use in the RS twelve, RS seven, RS five, RG five, RMX, RMF, RO, MXB, and LB districts, and section ninety-eight dash four point two to add a new section for cottage court use standards. With that, I will turn it over to our wonderful and very capable staff this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I am going to present to you the cottage court housing zoning text amendment. And I thought I'd first start with a very brief overview by what, sort of saying what cottage housing is, as concept. So cottage housing is a grouping of small houses arranged around a common area or multiple common areas. It's generally considered part of that missing middle of housing types. So those housing types between single-family detached and apartments, multifamily buildings, along with sort of duplexes and triplexes and that sort of housing. It's designed to promote more of a sense of community than your traditional subdivision is. And the houses in those types of communities can be detached, attached, or townhouses. It does appeal to a wide variety of people, including young professionals, couples, empty nesters, older adults, single adults, and then also small families. So now to dive into the ordinance itself, it will require amendments to several sections of our overall zoning ordinance. The first section that would be amended is section ninety-eight dash two point three, which is our table of housing types. So this amendment would just add a category for cottage court housing and include a definition of that type of housing as a group of small residential buildings that may be made up of detached, attached, or townhouse units or tiny houses. The majority of the units should front around a common open space with private open spaces provided for each unit. A cottage court may be developed on individual lots or with a common form of ownership. The second section of our zoning ordinance that would require an amendment is to the use table, and that would be in section ninety-eight dash two point four. And this would allow the cottage court by conditional use permit. So that would mean it is subject to discretionary view. A person interested in such development would need to apply for conditional use permit, which would then be reviewed by staff and then ultimately proceed to a public hearing before the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation, and then on to City Council for approval. So the ordinance would permit cottage courts by CUP in all of our residential zoning districts, which is the RS twelve, seven, five, RG five, RMX, RMF, RO, and then two of our business districts, the mixed business districts, the MXB, and then the local business LB. Both of those business districts already permit certain housing types right now. It's more of a mixed-use type districts. The next section of the zoning ordinance that would require an amendment is our definitions chapter, and that's ninety-eight dash ten and point three, and it would add a definition for cottage court. And this definition, very similar to the one I just read, but slightly different, describes cottage court as a group of small detached houses, attached houses, townhouses, with a limit of four attached units per structure, up to fifty percent of the development, or tiny homes fronting around a common space. A cottage court may be developed on individual lots or with a common form of ownership. And then the final section of our ordinance that require an amendment is to our residential use standard section, and this is section ninety-eight dash four point two. And this is where sort of the bulk of the new ordinance would lie. It would establish new use standards specifically for cottage courts. And so next, I'll provide a run-through of those use standards, starting with the purpose and intent of that ordinance. So the purpose of the cottage court housing type is to promote infill development and redevelopment within established neighborhoods that is consistent in style and materials with the existing surrounding structures. By situating many housing units in small spaces, cottage court or cottage courts are an efficient use of land and cost-effective in the delivery of city services. The cottage court housing type encourages innovative site planning and variety in housing types to meet the needs of diverse populations, including young professionals, older adults, empty nesters, and small families. Cottage court housing is pedestrian scaled and community-oriented. And it provides developers and property owners the flexibility to develop projects that strengthen existing neighborhoods. So with that, we'll dive into sort of more of the general use standards that would be in place for cottage courts. The first one, "In the event that use standards pertaining to cottage court housing are determined by the zoning administrator to expressly conflict with any other provision of the zoning ordinance, these use standards shall take precedence and shall preempt any such expressly conflicting standard." This statement was necessary because there are several places in our zoning ordinance that wouldn't permit for cottage housing, as is. And so this takes care of those conflicts and just says what's contained in the use, in the use standards for cottage courts supersede any other standard in the zoning ordinance.
And just, just kind of for a point of clarification, so these were items that were run by our legal counsel. So it's common in zoning ordinances sometimes that there might be kind of a blanket statement that's guiding certain types of development. And so, you know, the potential that you might not catch those little pieces all throughout the ordinance. And so this helps essentially to say if there is kind of any remaining conflicting item that the cottage court standards would apply for that specific request.
So our next standard has to do with the architectural details for cottage courts. And it states that a cottage court development should endeavor to fit in or be respectful of the context of the surrounding neighborhood. Architectural details shall be submitted with the conditional use permit application to show how the neighborhood will be compatible with the broader neighborhood. So rather than having specific architectural detail requirements associated with cottage courts, this puts the onus on developer to say, how will this fit into the neighborhood? And describe how that is, so we can review that on the front end. Next, cottage housing may be developed on several parcels or on a single parcel of land. If they are subdivided on individual parcels, the all common areas or shared improvements shall be dedicated to and maintained by a homeowners association or condominium association as applicable. And then finally, cottage courts shall not be used as short-term rentals except within the LB and MXB districts. And that's put in there mainly to ensure that our residential neighborhoods stay residential with people living here and keep sort of the more tourist aspects or potential of this ordinance in areas that are already more mixed use and already have some of those elements in them. As far as the subdivision goes, here's that slide again that sure gives an example of the difference between a condominium-style development versus a subdivision-style. You keep that single parcel of land for the houses and they're individually sold, or you have the subdivision where the smaller lots are split up and sold. Now, as far as review requirements go, if the project stays a single parcel of land with no intention of subdividing, it will require a major site development plan in accordance with section ninety-eight dash seven point seven of City Code. And that's very similar, or that is very similar to what our commercial developments go through now. In any commercial development, they have to submit a very detailed site plan about what they intend to do, and that would be the requirement here as well. Projects that are developed as subdivision units would require, going through the major or minor subdivision process, depending on the project. If it was a major subdivision project, which is most likely, they would be required to go through that preliminary plat, public improvement plan review process. It also requires that there be some designation made or communicated for community trash receptacles or dumpsters indicated on the plans for the development so that we know upfront what their plan is regarding that. And then finally, the requirements for utilities per chapter eighty-six of City Code shall apply. So any utility requirements, you refer back to chapter eighty-six, which our other developments currently do as well. Moving on to the unit size, the ordinance does not have a minimum size requirement for a cottage court dwelling. However, the prevailing building code requirements that are in chapter eighteen of our City Code would apply. So that sets specific size standards for rooms that would still apply, and therefore, by default, set a minimum house size.
And just to clarify, I know we talked about this last time, but for the benefit that some, for some that were not here, the city currently does not have a minimum house size. So this is no different than kind of the rest of the city in terms of we don't have a minimum square footage required other than what would be required by building code. But as far as zoning is concerned, there's no minimum square footage.
However, the ordinance does limit the maximum size of the cottage court units to twelve hundred square feet of finished floor area and then seventeen hundred square feet of gross square footage. That's any attachments like porches or decks would be included in that definition. Moving on to the parking requirements, each cottage court unit, there'll be one point two five spaces required. And then if, if, when running the calculations with the total number of units, if it falls between two numbers, that will be rounded up to the nearest number. Parking areas rather than individual driveways are encouraged. And those areas should be clustered in logical areas throughout the development. And then if a property has existing alley access, the parking area should be accessed from that alley. The idea here is to cluster parking in logical areas away from sort of the central area of the cottage housing community. Parking can also be located within an accessory structure, such as a multiport, multi-car carport or garage, but that cannot be attached to individual cottages. It has to be a detached structure. But individual carports or garages meant for individual use can be attached to the rear of cottages. Parking should be oriented to ensure that cottage housing units are the main focal point of the development. And those areas shall be screened in accordance with the applicable landscaping standards of section ninety-eight dash five point four point seven to ensure that they're screened appropriately. And then here are a couple examples of those parking options that other cottage housing communities have, have done. One is that parking lot idea off to the side. And then you have your cottage units over here with the parking back here. You have a multi-carport, which is, you can sort of see it here, sort of off-centered between cottage units. And then you also have sort of a through road or alley that runs along the outside, and each unit is individually accessed. And then finally, you have one where it's a cluster of attached garages, and then each person has their own individual garage. So moving on to the common area requirements, the ordinance does require that four hundred square feet of common area or common space per cottage court unit is required. And those should consist of a central space, or depending on the size, a series of interconnected spaces. At least fifty percent of the units should abut the common area, and all units shall be within a reasonable walking distance of that common open space. And the common open space will also have at least two cottages abutting, or excuse me, at least, shall have cottages abutting at least two sides of it. So you have that sort of community feel wraparound. However, stormwater facilities, connections between common areas, parking areas, driveways, and other physically constrained areas such as wetlands or steep floes, slopes cannot be counted towards the common area requirements. It has to be usable open space. And finally, all units shall have access to the common areas and public sidewalk through the use of walkways. The walkways shall be at least four feet wide and consist of a material that meets current ADA accessibility standards. And here again are a couple examples of other cottage court communities and how they've handled their common areas. You have the ones that center it, as sort of the focal point between the cottage units opens out. And this one has a, also a community building located at the one end with the other college cottages sort of circling it. This one is interconnected. There's sort of a smaller common area along here with walkways that lead to a larger common area. And then here again, sort of you have your, your main common area here with walkways to the other cottages. In addition to the common open areas, there will be private areas that are required. So each cottage housing unit shall be provided a minimum of two hundred square feet of usable private open space. And this open space should be screened or otherwise separated from the common open space area to create a sense of separate ownership, privacy, and may include front or backyards, gardening areas, patios, or porches. However, no dimension of private open space shall be less than eight square feet. And that's mainly to ensure that it's usable private open space that can be enjoyed. So here again, just a couple examples of how other cottage communities have handled the open spaces. You have the common area there in the center. And then this one has utilized some backyard patios and along with some front porches that open up into that common area. Another one, you have the common area in the center, and then you have the small front yards with attached porches. Moving on to the orientation of the units. Because cottage court communities are meant to facilitate that community feel and open up, you know, sort of facing your neighbor, you walk out your front door, you see your neighbor across the way. They, by default, won't necessarily front in a public street. And so to ensure that they still fit in with the broader neighborhood because of that frontage not being on that public street, the ordinance does require that cottages with facades facing a public street avoid blank walls or the appearance that the units turn their back on, to the street. That's by including one or more of the following on all the street-facing facade, facades. And that includes changes in exterior siding material and paint color, windows, which may include bay windows, some sort of building modulation with a depth measuring at least one foot, and then also views of front doors or porches. And the majority of these units shall be oriented around that common area to promote that sense of community. And then the specific area and dimensional standards for these developments. So we set the minimum track size at ten thousand square feet. When you take into account the other considerations, your, your private areas, your open space, the maximum size of dwellings, ten thousand square feet seem to be the minimum track size to fit four units on. So that is how we determined that number. We do have reduced setbacks. For your front rear, you've got ten-foot setbacks, and your side setbacks would be set at five feet. The minimum density for one of these developments is four units, whereas the maximum density would be twenty units per acre. If the property were to be subdivided into individual lots, we are not requiring a minimum lot size. The building separation should be at least ten feet. And if any part of the cottage intrudes into the space, intrudes into that ten-foot space buffer, it would require some sort of fire-resistant construction material on those parts of the, parts of the building. And then finally, the building height maximum is thirty-five feet. And to avoid having units sort of towering over each other may require a step-back condition for that second floor, so it's stepped back and it's not towering over the common areas.
And that's a common requirement we have now for certain residential development of, of that height.
And then finally, buffer requirements, landscaping buffer requirements, these will be determined on a case-by-case basis during the conditional use permit process. This is instead of requiring one of our traditional landscape buffers, which are ten, fifteen, and twenty feet wide with a series of shrubs and trees. Because these are thought to be parcels that are a little bit unusual and constrained, that buffer will be determined on a case-by-case basis of what fits best to that site. And then finally, alternative standards. Designs that do not comply with all the provisions above may be considered and approved during the conditional use permit process in accordance with section ninety-eight dash seven point six point eleven. And so here again, that provides that flexibility if you have a site that doesn't quite, you can't quite meet some of the use standards or you have an idea of a better way to design things, can present to us for SaaS review and then, you know, consideration for Planning Commission and Council as well.
And alternative standards are helpful in a zoning ordinance, you know, no matter what time, because it's often difficult to think of absolutely everything that might come up. But also extremely helpful with a new ordinance or something that hasn't been conceived of before because it may, you know, open the door to some kind of new idea. And then certainly, if it's something we're seeing all the time come through as an alternative standard, then we would just update the ordinance to reflect it. But it, it really just gives that flexibility and certainly isn't just a, I don't feel like doing it, I shouldn't have to type thing, but more if there's some kind of justifiable reason, planning staff can evaluate it and bring a recommendation to you all, and then ultimately the decision, recommendation of Planning Commission and decision of council.
So that is all of the ordinance. So preliminary data from the Saw Housing Study did confirm, you know, what we all know, there, there is a housing shortage in our community. But it also pointed out there is a discrepancy in the size and type of units that are available for folks. The study pointed out that one in two-person households make up about sixty-five percent of households in the overall Saw region, whereas units with three or more bedrooms make up seventy percent of the housing stock. So cottage courts could be a way to help fill a need for smaller housing that is not there currently. So with that, you know, cottage housing is another tool to help address housing. This ordinance would allow cottage housing as a usable, as an allowable use to the zoning ordinance. However, the applicants would still need to go through that conditional use permit process. And if they were ultimately approved through that process, then go through the site development plan or preliminary plat review process. So it's a multi-step review. Staff anticipates that this could be used for vacant infill lots or lots in need of redevelopment. It's meant to be flexible and, and fit on some of those smaller parcels that aren't large enough to be developed as a full-on subdivision. And then finally, cottage housing could create a less expensive housing option. These communities generally require less public infrastructure, and they also are smaller houses at a slightly greater density than some of the other residential use types. So all of those could help address some of the, the housing issues if someone were to take advantage of it. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question, Allison. Let me see, go back and find where I left that here. Where does it address? Oh, here we go. It is under the general standards. It says cottages to be used as short-term rentals shall be permitted in the LB and MXB district only. Can we assume that that would be the opportunity for some individual entity or whatever to come in and put in place a group of Airbnbs that don't necessarily fit with the community theme of the cottage-style houses, but does fall within the realm and of the ordinance?
So, so the intention that we had there was to, because the thought and intention behind it is that cottage housing courts could be infill into residential communities, that we wouldn't want to permit Airbnbs in those situations. But two of our zoning districts that this ordinance would allow cottage courts in do have businesses already allowed in them. They're much more of a mixture of uses. And so it's saying you cannot utilize cottage courts to do Airbnbs in any residential-only districts. But you could potentially utilize an Airbnb-type situation in the, the business districts. And I think are the mixed residential business districts. And I think at that point, you know, some of it is going to be on city staff as someone comes forward and saying, you know, I kind of want to locate one here in a, in a mixed business district that we could say, well, we actually would allow those to be air, you know, like Airbnb opportunities. Is that your, you know, goal of the development? Because usually, you know, people are pretty forthcoming, like, hey, this is a recreational opportunity I'm envisioning. So the, the reason we crafted the ordinance that way is to recognize that, you know, potentially we might have kind of the recreational component take advantage of this. And we don't necessarily see that as a bad thing, but limiting it only to those areas that already have business and more of a mixed-use nature. And then again, kind of reminding you all that none of the ordinance approves anything. It really just allows someone to come forward with an application. So maybe someone comes forward with an application and says they want to do kind of an Airbnb community and say it is in a mixed business district, but say it's right up against more residential housing and, and might not make the most sense, then that's kind of part of our evaluation and part of your evaluation. So putting it in the ordinance allows it as a possibility in the districts that are more kind of business-oriented, if that makes sense. They're already used to having potentially industrial, business, residential uses kind of coexisting.
I'd be curious to know, I know, know you put in there minimum lots out of, of ten thousand square feet, which is a two hundred by five hundred foot lot. I'd be curious to know how many vacant two hundred by five hundred foot lots are in Waynesboro. Over where I live, I only know of one, and it barely meets that requirement.
Yeah, so I think it's important, you know, when we put these ordinances in place, we are thinking kind of like obviously a long-range vision. So there might be properties that are in need of redevelopment where it would make sense for, you know, a, an existing structure to potentially be torn down to create a cottage court scenario. And, and that could go well into the future of. And then we do have lots potentially that, you know, are undeveloped, and there are four lots beside each other that are all very small that could be combined into one. So yeah, I, I am not exactly sure of the number. It's kind of difficult to do that exercise because some of the individual lots that could be combined into a singular lot would be hard for us to pick up if we did like a GIS query. But yeah, I'm sure there'd be a way for us to kind of get a feel for that. You know, but our hope is that really the, the builders and the developers and kind of the private market go out and find those scenarios that make sense for them. And this is really just kind of opening it up as an opportunity.
Yeah, I was just trying to get in my mind an area in Waynesboro that may be the first opportunity that somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, I got these lots, and you're right, it would take four. And you're right, it would take four or five of the existing-sized lots that were vacant owned by the same individual to put one of these in.
Do you know where Patterson Court is down here on South Wayne?
I believe so.
I suspect that it would probably not look dissimilar to that, right? That's how that's kind of centrally laid out.
Okay.
That's sort of what I envision. I have two questions, and forgive me for being behind the eight ball because I missed a meeting last month. And forgive me for being, I was told recently that as a lawyer, we always see all the problems, think of all the problems and raisin. My two questions are, does the ordinance, as it's written, would it give the planning commission any discretion to, based on the ordinance, deny a CUP to put, let's say, eight trailers on a, as a cottage housing development on a small parcel? Considering that trailers have been a point of contention here lately?
Our ordinance has a section for mobile home parks.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, it would, it would be clear in our minds in terms of staff if someone said that to say, you know, "What you are talking about is a mobile home park, and we have a separate zoning designation for that." But yes, we could certainly ask legal counsel in terms of kind of the definitiveness of that. But the way we've talked about cottage courts and kind of the definition implied, I think we, I think we'd be on solid legal ground from a zoning standpoint to say, you know, what you're describing falls within the mobile, excuse me, manufactured home park subdivision, and that's a separate zoning designation, so you can't kind of mix those things.
Yeah, I think that's something that we probably, and I don't want to be obstructionist because I missed a meeting, so that may be something perhaps that might need to be modified before it goes to council as opposed to, we can maybe suggest.
That it be included, yeah, you could make a recommendation with that added.
And then my other question is, I noticed the maximum lot size was per acre, and you used that word that causes us all these problems down there at the bottom of that slide, density. The, so if I had a, let's say hypothetically, a 400-acre parcel on the edge of town, and instead of putting townhouses on it or something like that, could I put cottage houses on it at a significantly higher density rate? So like, I just, I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently allowing for a higher density once, because we all think about these projects as infill developments.
Right.
And I think that's the way it's intended, the way I'm hearing it to be intended, but I can envision some really creative developer.
And it could be on new development also.
Going out on the edge of town and saying, "Oh, I can get 80 townhouses," or 200 cottage courthouse in here. And then, you know, again, we're going to have, I want to make sure we have a basis within the ordinance, if that comes up, to say that's not really consistent with how we see this ordinance being used in terms of new development.
So Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did set a 20-unit-per-acre maximum.
Maximum.
Which is in keeping with our multifamily development. So, you know, we, staff envisions cottage court kind of being in the, you know, it's single-family detached, you know, possibly, or it's townhouse, but so it's no higher than what we permit a multifamily acreage to be. So it could be denser than what our typical townhouse or typical single-family detached developments could be, but it would be limited to no more than 20 units per acre. And that would be, and I haven't done kind of that layout to see if that is even possible in terms of you have to have, you know, so much parking and so.
Right. I just, I'm just, again, I'm concerned about, I feel like the longer I do this, the more I learn. And I start to think about things that we've seen in the past and how things that we do now fit into the context of those things. And so that's the thinking about, considering all of the feedback we get about density, considering making sure that we're being conscientious, that we're not inadvertently facilitating a density or, or, you know, somebody really creative figuring out a way to shoehorn something that's not, because I mean, you could take RS7, apply for a CUP and get cottage, if approved, get cottage housing on something that otherwise would be large lot, single-family. And we would have no basis in the ordinance necessarily to deny that.
No, so with the conditional use permit, I think that council has a wide ability to determine if something fits into the existing neighborhood or not. So I think you would, council would be well within its discretionary rights to say, "This is RS7. Everything within the surrounding area is RS7." Based on what has been put forth by the developer, we don't think they have proposed architectural details or styles that fit in with the neighborhood. We don't think they've gone far enough to try and make sure that the units aren't kind of turning their back to the street. We don't think, so all of those things, you know, could go into that decision. So I think that that is why we have put it in as a CUP and that there is kind of great latitude there. I would think our legal counsel has kind of advised us in that before and that, you know, you're really not worrying about precedent in those cases. I mean, certainly if it's the exact same scenario, but with a conditional use permit, it is very location-specific, application-specific, and then condition-specific, what conditions staff would recommend and council would ultimately decide to place on the property.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
And just for, unless, if there are no other questions, we didn't do any kind of sign-up sheet for the public hearing, so whenever you're ready, you could just open the public hearing and ask people to come forward.
All right, do we have any other questions for staff?
I have one. You said single car and carports may be attached. If they are attached, does that count against the square footage?
So we have, that would be at part, consider part of that gross square footage, that's 1,700 square feet.
I think I heard, yep, sorry, go ahead.
You gave several examples of cottage-style housing up there. How recent were these developed? I mean, are some of them just in the last year or two, or some of them is, I mean, how long has this idea been out there?
Based on my research, it's been around for a little while. Some of these communities got going in the 90s. A lot of them, I think, and cottage court housing sort of has been part of the overall housing development since early 20th century, specifically, especially sort of in California, Los Angeles area, there's a lot of little cottage court communities out there. But the more recent developments are primarily starting in probably 90s Pacific Northwest, and that's kind of migrated across the US. There are several in developments that I came across in Oklahoma that was very recently built out, based on the images I saw. There's several being built or recently built down in the Raleigh area, North Carolina, and then also some up in New England, Rhode Island. Couple examples I found in Rhode Island area, both relatively, relatively new. I believe the Rhode Island example, that HUD case study that I presented on last month, I believe that was built in the teens, the 2010s, I believe, is when that was, when that was built. So it varies.
Okay. Has any research been done as far as looking into these cottage-style communities? How successful they are? And have they, everybody just loves them and, or has there been, have there been any cases where, "Boy, I wish we didn't do that"?
Based on the research I came across, people love them. It's, it's, the more recent developments that I came across, the Pacific Northwest, the units sold out quite quickly. The HUD case study units, all the units were sold within a year. And from what I understand, I haven't come across any sort of negative articles on cottage court housing in my research. There are quite a few very positive. People like that community, they like the smaller living, especially, I think older adults especially, they came up, retirees came up a lot in my research, liking this type of community.
All right, any other questions for staff? Thank you. All right, we're now going to open the public hearing for the aforementioned zoning text amendment. Any person who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Scott Williams. I am with Crescent Development Homes. I'm a builder-developer in Fisherville. My address is P.O. Box 700, Fisherville, Virginia. I am on the board of the Local Home Builders Association, the Augusta Home Builders Association, and I am the current president of the Home Builders Association of Virginia. So I'm here to offer the perspective of the building and development community. And I want to say first of all that I think as an industry, we need tools to try and address several issues: affordability, home supply, homelessness. And to me, this is one tool that can help us in this process. It's not a end-all, cure-all by any stretch, but it's something that can help. I think everybody who reads a newspaper, watches TV, knows that there's several issues right now within housing. Affordability is one, availability is another, in addition to the homeless crisis across the country. This isn't a silver bullet, and there's not an easy answer to any of this. I commend staff for bringing forward something that will give us an opportunity to try and effect change in some way. I think that anything that we can do to give builders, developers, and owners the ability to try and provide non-traditional housing types and areas where, that are being underutilized, I think that is only going to help. If you'll permit me to editorialize for one second about density, so in my opinion, and again, I'm a developer-builder, density is not the demon. I understand you guys probably get comments, and the public looks at density as something that's a challenge. From where I sit, I see density as the only way for us to get kind of to the root of the problem. In today's world, the cost of building and developing a new street with public water sewer, storm sewer, stormwater detention, water quality, all of the above, that cost to develop that road has gone from 200 bucks a linear foot 15 years ago to now approaching $2,000 a foot. And it's just simple math. If you have two houses, you know, a house for every 100 feet, you've got houses on both sides of the street, you can do the math and kind of see where we're going, or see where we are. In my opinion, the next shoe to drop in this whole affordability issue is lot cost, and they are going through the roof. So as a developer who's paying contractors to put in road, water, and sewer, I'm telling you that those prices are just skyrocketing. And I don't see anything that's happening in this world today that's peeling back standards that are going into what, what is required to build that public road. You know, the requirements for water lines and sewer lines and storm sewers, they're not getting peeled back, so they're being increased. And there are probably good reasons for all of that. But my point is, unless we increase density where you want it, where there's facilities for it, the cost of a developed lot is going to continue to spiral out of control up. And the cost of a lot is typically anywhere between 18 and 30% of a new house. So the more expensive the lot, the more expensive the house. So anything that we can do to improve density done through kind of different techniques or whatever is only going to help us try and bring down or bend the curve down a little bit. I just see that as the only way for us to try and, as an industry, as a nation, to try and get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing no one else who wishes to speak. We're now going to close the public comment hearing, public hearing on the aforementioned zoning text amendment. Public hearing being closed. Do you have any observations? Are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote? Do we have a?
I move that we adopt the text amendment, zoning text amendment put forward by staff.
Staff, do we need to include something that gives you all latitude to amend it, to address the trailer issue between now and when it goes to city council in our motion?
Sure, if that, if that's planning commission's desire, I would just make sure to include a motion that you would recommend approval with the addition of, you know, a provision that makes clear that manufactured housing is not part of the cottage court.
So, Mr. Slade?
I move that we adopt the zoning text amendment put forward by staff with an additional amendment to give state the leeway to address the free manufactured housing.
And that is not included, that is not included.
Well, it's just giving state the leeway to adopt that prior to going to city council to address that.
Okay, with that motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, do we need to have a roll call vote, or can we have a regular vote? Well, let's, we can start with a regular vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, staff, for your work, and I apologize again for being behind the eight ball on some of those issues.
No worries.
Next on the agenda, we have review of minor subdivisions and final subdivision plats approved since the August 20, 2024 meeting.
Okay, I have two of those for you this evening. The first one is located at 540 Lew Duitt Boulevard, tax map number 31-6-17. This is right at the corner of Brookdale and Lew Duitt. It's part of the Duitt Crossing development, and it's very basically splitting this parcel in half right along that little stream that runs through there. Here's a look at that plat. I believe this lot is on the market to be sold currently for commercial development. The second one I have for you tonight is 1325 West 12th Street, tax map number 44-4-11, lots 17 through 20. This is over at the corner of 12th and Poplar, I believe. Kind of hard to see, but it's these four lots right here. They were reconfigured and split down the middle for a single-family detached, all this, the lot on Poplar. And here's a look at that plat. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Excellent. We have public comment, now we have a public comment period for items not on the agenda. All right, hearing none. Next up, we have matters from staff.
So we have a couple meeting updates, so some that are on your agenda and one that is not. So I'm going to start with the one that is not. Our typical regularly scheduled meeting for October would be Tuesday, October 22nd, but we have a conflict in this room. We have scheduled a VDOT public hearing on our West Main Street Access Management Improvement Project, so this room is going to be unavailable that night. So I'm hopeful that we could have a motion to move the October 22nd meeting to Wednesday, October 23rd. And if we set that at tonight's meeting, then that should be sufficient. So, and if that's, if that's agreeable to the commission, we will just move Tuesday, October 22nd's meeting to Wednesday, October 23rd.
I'll make that motion that we move the October 22nd meeting to October 23rd.
All in favor? Any opposed? I guess nobody's got any vacation plans.
This happens to be my birthday.
All right, we got to remember that.
Yeah, we'll have to bring you. And then the other items that we wanted to bring up is that we have three scheduled work sessions, so these are kind of above and beyond your typical meetings. And these are something that staff is extremely excited about. You know, typically, we offer the ability for planning commissioners to go take a planning commissioner's training course that's done at VCU. commissioners' training course that's done at VCU. But obviously, we understand that that takes a lot of time, and some people don't have the ability to do that. So we have engaged an individual who does some work in planning commissioners' training, and they have, they are willing to come these three different dates. So Tuesday, October 1, Wednesday, November 6, and Tuesday, December 3 at 7:00 PM to do a training. So there won't be any votes that evening. It will purely be a training that we hope you all can attend, but we just wanted to make sure you were aware of those at this time. We plan to broadcast those, and if anything changes with that, we'll let you know.
Is it part one, part two, and part three, or are you given the same thing?
They're all three separate topics, but I don't, while they kind of build on each other, if you weren't at one, you know, separate topics. But yes, all different items to cover.
Got it.
And I think he has said that kind of block out two hours for each of them, but they might not, you know, take the full two hours. But that would be kind of the maximum.
Excellent.
And as we get closer, we'll, you know, obviously kind of provide topics for each one, so you can look forward to that.
All right.
I enjoy the ones that I did.
Great.
Is that all we have from staff? Commissioners' correspondence and communication. Just want to say thank you to everybody for holding it down in my absence last month. I took my wife to the beach for some much-needed vacation. I apologize that I was not able to be here, but we booked that trip a year in advance. And when I mentioned the conflict to her, I was told in unequivocal terms that I would not be here, so. All right, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.